We retire behind the rail, we will get this show on the road. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Senior Pastor Terry Davis of Christ Community Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to acknowledge President of Council Darrell Clark, as well as Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown for the invitation to come and to join with you in this morning's session. Also want to acknowledge Janie Blackwell, Councilwoman, who is the leader of the district where our church is located in University City. Let us bow our heads as we honor our great God. Father, thank you for who you are. We acknowledge that you alone are God and you are our great God. Life comes from you. Strength comes from you. Provision comes from you. Protection comes from you. You are the one we turn to for wisdom and understanding on how to lead and how to be effective leaders. And so we invite you in this morning. Thank you for the United States of America, its people, its government. We bring before you on purpose this morning, our President, and all of the men and women who hold positions of authority all over our land. We pray that your spirit will rest upon all of them. Help them to see what is right and just with your vision and through your lens. We pray today specifically for the city of Philadelphia. We pray for our mayor. We pray for the men and women of our city council led by our President Darrell Clark. Father, they have invited you in this morning. Therefore, please give them wisdom from you. Wisdom filled with understanding on how to lead effectively. Give them the kind of fiscal wisdom that will bring financial health and financial help to this city's communities, schools, families, and businesses. We all come to you today, Lord, asking you to bring safety to our city. That under the leadership of this city council, we ask you to bring safety for the close to 2 million lives of the city of Philadelphia. We are neither afraid nor are we ashamed to ask you to bring the crime rate down and the employment rate up. Please heal, oh Lord, the racial tension that we are facing. Help us to see and live out the reality that everyone, 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 and every life is significant, valuable, and precious. Help this council, Lord, with the kind of wisdom that you gave to Solomon. To help those living in the mansion as well as those living in the shelter or on the street. To help those buying their first home and those living in the nursing home. Show them how to effectively help children, students, single parents, those with no insurance, those in prison. Father, the list goes on and on. They need your help. We pray today that as these seventeen men and women interact with each other, as they, for the sake of the poor and the middle class, the upper class, big business and small business, as they challenge and confront one another and as they passionately seek for better benefits for the districts that they represent, Lord, let unity prevail among them and may this city council's unity and oneness achieve greatness. Father, this council has a daunting task of providing leadership for this large city. But with your great might and your great power, it can be achieved. For you have said, "We can do all things through Christ, which gives us strength." So Father, please strengthen them. Strengthen their staff and the personnel in their offices. Thank you for giving to our city a city council with the kinds of men and women who have hearts to serve. They have made and they continue to make great individual and family sacrifices as they seek to make our city great and blessed. So we pray for protection over their lives. We pray for healing over their bodies. Please bless their families and their relationships and fill their lives with peace. Father, as we're all gathered here with one passionate voice in this place, we together ask that you help and heal all who have been wounded by the recent attack in Las Vegas, Nevada. Help them, Lord, their families, their loved ones, and all who are working to restore safety and sanity to that part of our land. They need you. We need you. And finally, Lord, we're so grateful. We're so thankful that we can come to you at any time and find help and strength and comfort and encouragement. Wisdom, direction, safety, and peace. Thank you for hearing us and in faith answering our prayers as we have asked all of these things. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you Pastor Phil, those inspiring words. We really appreciate it. Council will be at ease. Again, thank you Pastor. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Janie Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a special pleasure and privilege today to introduce some visitors from Nigeria, Africa. They are here, they're going to be involved in signing an MOU with Temple University, with African Caribbean Business Council, and also in my area with Drexel. They're dealing with technology engagement and university exchanges. And they'll visit both universities, Temple and certainly Drexel. And I'm honored. I'll ask them to stand and there are more people than will stand. They have folks with them as well. Yusuf Bashir, this is my nephew Yusuf Bashir. He's CEO of Kaduna ICT Hub. Alhaji Babangida Inuwu, he's Chairman of Kaduna ICT Hub. Ibrahim Ishmael is Director of Kaduna ICT Hub. Now, this organization that they're all representing affects 200,000 students. So this is something that we're really, really proud of and really proud to have them here to interact with our universities and to work with them as well. In addition, we have Professor Ibrahim Abubakar Inyogi, the Vice Chancellor, University of Madgore in Borno State. Professor Kayari Mohammed, the Vice Chancellor of Modibo, Adama University of Technology, Yola Adamo State. Professor Yakubu Mukhtar, the Vice Chancellor of Yobi State University in Damatoro, Yobi State. Professor Abubakar M. Kundiri, Vice Chancellor of Federal University, Mukari, Taraba State. And Professor Ibrahim Garba, Vice Chancellor of Amadubello University, Zariah, in Kaduna State. So would them and all those with them, please stand so that... And so, oh, before they do, of course, our hostess always stands stronger, as you all know. He's Chairman Emeritus of the Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs. Also echoes of Africa. He recently became Head of UNESCO. He's head of that now and he goes to those meetings. He's also honorary counsel to Guinea-West Africa and so many other things. He and I, in fact, I'm proud to be with him, will be honored on Sunday. And we're very, very grateful for all that happens. And we look forward to that big honor in Germantown on Sunday. And certainly let me say, welcome to them and I ask you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Welcome. Thank you so much for being here today. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 28th, 2017. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 28th, 2017 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and promptly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 28th, 2017. Stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilwoman Helen Gim and Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. The record shall reflect that there have been granted leave of absence. The Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to witness their government in action. We truly appreciate you being here. So again, thank you for being in the chambers today. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly, who presented a resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. With Jean Lizinski and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Greenly, we have Councilman Green, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown. And Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important every year to recognize, continue to recognize the issue of domestic violence, how important it is, and particularly to recognize those who fight real hard every day and work real hard every day against this scourge just in our city and across the whole country. So with that, to that end, this is a resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is being sponsored locally by Women Against Abuse and through their sponsorship, they are encouraging everyone to help to increase the awareness of domestic violence in our homes and communities and decrease its negative effect on Philadelphia. And...
Whereas each year, the Philadelphia Police Department responds to more than 100,000 domestic-related calls and domestic violence is not just a local problem, but a national issue where more than three women a day are murdered by their husbands or boyfriends in the United States. Whereas founded in 1976, the mission of Women Against Abuse is to provide quality and compassionate services in a manner that fosters self-respect and independence to persons experiencing intimate partner violence and to lead the struggle to end domestic violence through advocacy and community education.
Whereas, Women Against Abuse in partnership with Congreso de Latinos Unites, Lutheran Settlement House, Bilingual Domestic Violence Program, and Women in Transition, the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Collaborative provides a comprehensive continuum of services to survivors of domestic violence and their families in Philadelphia, which includes housing, legal aid, counseling, medical advocacy, behavioral health services. And whereas, the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Collaborative provides education, training to the community about domestic violence issues and resources and has partnered with the city of Philadelphia to operate the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Hotline. In fiscal year 2017, more than 13,000 calls were answered through the hotline. And...
Whereas, to ensure a more holistic approach to addressing violence in our community, Women Against Abuse and its sister agencies are partnering with the city administration and over seventy different community stakeholders to implement shared safety. Philadelphia's response to relational violence, a citywide strategic plan to respond to domestic violence in Philadelphia. And whereas, to support a coordinated community response to domestic violence, Women Against Abuse, Lutheran Settlement House, Congreso, and Women in Transition will hold events throughout the month of October to promote knowledge about domestic violence and to build community support so that all Philadelphians will take a stand against violence. Now therefore, be it...
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia declares and recognizes October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Further resolved, and an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to representatives of Women Against Abuse as a sincere expression of city council's gratitude, appreciation, and commendation for raising the public's awareness regarding domestic violence. This is a true and correct copy of the resolution. It was introduced by myself, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Green, and Councilman Jones, and strongly supported by all members of the city council. Thank you all for all you do every day to fight this tremendous problem in our city. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
And the Chair recognizes Lizinski for remarks.
Thank you, Councilmembers Greenly, Reynolds, Browns, Jones, and Green, and all the members of council. We have some good news in Philadelphia, and that is that all of our council members are champions on behalf of survivors and towards working to a peaceful community. We are honored to be here again this year to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And as the Executive Director of Women Against Abuse, I'm grateful for this moment with all of you each year. Because while Domestic Violence Awareness Month marks another year of progress in Philadelphia's response, it's also a time to prepare for what lies ahead. With so many examples of hate and violence in our country right now, it is important to reflect on where violence begins. Gloria Steinem calls domestic violence "original violence", and she reminds us that the home in our country is the single most dangerous place for a woman. That ending domestic violence is the key to world peace. As a city, we must consider the ways in which violent, coercive, and controlling behavior that for centuries has been happening behind closed doors is impacting our streets and our communities. And we must commit to stronger prevention work to abate this violence before it begins. This has certainly been a trying year as we're consistently exposed to messages of violence and hate. These messages are challenging for any of us but have a compounding impact on victims in our city who are already struggling daily with messages that they're not good enough. What we're seeing on the news and in our streets is only the tip of the iceberg of what many people in our community are experiencing right inside their homes. And continued rhetoric of hate and unacceptance is further isolating victims already too scared or too ashamed to reach out for help. So as a community, we must do better. And we must actively declare that violence, whether on our street corners or in our homes, is wholly unacceptable. And if you are a person who is being hurt, we see you and we are here for you, no matter your color, your religion, your gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, class, or immigration status. While today is an important day, as this proclamation officially recognizes Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Philadelphia, we must remember that every day, thousands of Philadelphians are experiencing domestic violence. And almost 300 of them will call the police today related to this violence. And many more will be too afraid to call. So this year, let's make the most of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Our city looks to you for leadership. And how will you raise your voice for victims of domestic violence in our community? I want to thank you for your commitment to being part of this struggle because together, we know we can change the course of relational violence and create a safer and healthier Philadelphia for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Council will be at ease. Thank you very much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan, who presented a resolution recognizing October 2017 as Manufacturing Month in the city of Philadelphia. With Jonathan Todd and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Heenan, we have Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil.
Well, good morning, everybody. Good morning. And once a year annually, it is my pleasure to recognize 2017 Manufacturing Month, October 2017 Manufacturing Month in the city of Philadelphia. And we do recognize a day like today as Manufacturing Day because there are scheduled events all throughout the city of Philadelphia and I hope you all can join. Manufacturing is live and well in the city of Philadelphia, employing over 20,000 people in our city as we speak. There's a lot of multi-discipline industries. It's very diverse economically. It's very diverse in its workforce. And it is in our neighborhoods and in corridors that employ Philadelphia residents with great partners such as CCP and our school district. We are trying to educate our children for the future of manufacturing. Advanced manufacturing, computer numbering systems. And the industry as we move forward, that's more technically advanced, is not like the old smokestack manufacturing industry as we once heard of. And it is our responsibility, I think, and it is our hope and vision, all right, that we communicate that to parents, to institutions, to workforce development boards, nonprofits, to get the message out to our communities, all right, that it is the future and the growth of industry in our city as we move forward. So behind us, you have just a little glimpse of what manufacturing looks like in our city. I wish you could see the computer machines and the simulation machines and the water cutters that have all this technology. And it's something that I probably couldn't operate, but Rhodes behind us can. Philly Shipyard can. We're making vessels that employ a ton of people, you know, over, you know, like 1,500 people to start just in our shipyard alone. Rhodes is a multimillion-dollar, multi-discipline company. Sureshade, a little point of personal privilege. Sureshade is a local advance manufacturer in my district. And it's a small owner-operated, worked out of a garage manufacturer that gives the boaters experience a more pleasure one in creating our shades for the boaters. So it is my pleasure in honoring all of them and honoring the month of October as Manufacturing Month here in our great city of Philadelphia. Whereas...
Whereas careers in manufacturing are characterized by above-average wages, rewarding work with well-defined career paths. Therefore, over... work with well-defined career paths, therefore over 20,000 manufacturing jobs in the City of Philadelphia. Yet, manufacturing companies regularly have difficulty in filling open positions. And whereas, thanks to the ongoing work of the Mayor's Manufacturing Task Force, manufacturers, government, and nonprofits have started to address the skills-labor shortage they face through outreach, education, and program development.
Whereas Philadelphia's manufacturing companies add to the vitality and prosperity of our community by providing above-average wages and creating family sustainability. Manufacturing makes a significant contribution to the local, state, and national economy. And whereas Philadelphia and the region helps to support an estimated 17.2 million jobs in the United States, about 1 in 6 private-sector jobs. Nearly 12 million Americans, or 9% of the workforce, are employed directly in manufacturing.
Whereas since 2012, the first Friday in October has been recognized as National Manufacturing Day and has been previously recognized by this body. To celebrate Manufacturing Day, groups locally, regionally, and nationally will sponsor projects and programs designed to create greater awareness and consciousness of the manufacturing sector. And whereas this year, the city, led by the Office of Industry and Manufacturing, with external partners including Delaware Valley Industrial Resource Center, Manufacturing Alliance of Philadelphia, Philadelphia Works U.S. 2020, the Urban Manufacturing Alliance, and the School District of Philadelphia, has expanded the celebration to span the month of October.
Whereas there will be events around the city, including a maker-listening session at the Loom, a Commerce and City Council visit to Derbyshire Machine and Tooling Company, a STEM Regional Network Conference, tours of local manufacturing facilities for Philadelphia School District students and their parents, manufacturing professionals speaking to high school students about careers in manufacturing, and a Manufacturing Day event at Leonardo Company. Whereas Manufacturing Month aims to communicate the opportunities in the sector and spotlight the range of products made in the City of Philadelphia for fields including aerospace, food and beverage, healthcare, packaging, and technology. Now therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize the month of October 2017, Manufacturing Month in the City of Philadelphia. And as you just heard, our administration, this body, the Department of Commerce, we have an Office of Industry Manufacturing that's focusing in on the growth, and it is the real opportunity to employ Philadelphia children and Philadelphians who do not have a career path. This is a clear choice for them by far in any industry in the City of Philadelphia. Resolved further that the gross quantity of this resolution be presented to the representatives of the manufacturing industry in the City of Philadelphia as further evidence of its sincere respect of this legislative body. Congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Todd for remarks.
Good morning, Council President and members of City Council. My name is Jonathan Todd, and I am the Director of Talent Development for the City of Philadelphia's Department of Commerce. Thank you to Councilman Heenan and the cosponsors of this resolution for their continued dedication to the manufacturing industry and assisting manufacturing companies to expand and thrive in Philadelphia. I would like to welcome representatives from several manufacturing companies that have joined us today. Rhodes Industries, who is a multi-discipline corporation that provides industrial fabrication, installation, and maintenance for commercial and government projects. Philadelphia Shipyard, who is a leading U.S. commercial shipyard constructing vessels for operations across the United States. Sureshade, who designs and manufactures innovative marine sunshade systems that enhance and facilitate the boating experience. And I'd also like to welcome representatives from the Community College of Philadelphia. CCP offers welding, precision machining, and electromechanical mechatronics technology courses, three programs that prepare individuals for careers in advanced manufacturing and an opportunity to earn a rewarding salary. A strong manufacturing industry is fundamental to the region's economic prosperity. Through the efforts of the Mayor's Manufacturing Task Force and Commerce's Office of Manufacturing and Industry, the Kenney Administration is committed to supporting growth and prosperity for manufacturers throughout Philadelphia. As mentioned in the resolution, events focusing on manufacturing will occur throughout October, and we look forward to working with all of you to provide Philadelphians with access to family-sustaining jobs in the manufacturing industry for years to come. Thank you.
Councilor B. Eas.
The next order of business is Communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the message from the Mayor to the Chief Chief Clerk, would you please read the messages from the Mayor?
To the President, the members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, and today transmitting to the Council the recommendations of the City Planning Commission on the following bills and amendments, Bill Number 170721, and a University of Pennsylvania Master Plan Amendment. And I am pleased to advise you that on October 3, 2017, I signed the following bill, which was passed by Council at a session on September 21, 2017, Bill Number 170595A.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the Journal, and the Chief Clerk, are there any other messages in your possession?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
The next order of business will be the introduction of bills and resolutions. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Good morning, good morning. I offer two resolutions today and one bill, and the resolutions are cosponsored by colleagues Johnson, Green, Taltenberger, Dom, Greenlee, Jones, O., Blackwell, and Parker. Thank you.
An ordinance amending Section 171603 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans contents to require the provision of information relating to prior history of meeting goals established in connection with city contracts and the prior history of related corporate entities.
That bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing October 2017 as Energy Action Month in the City of Philadelphia.
Be placed on today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and celebrating Young Involved Philadelphia and its 8th Annual State of Young Philly Week in the City of Philadelphia.
And that privilege resolution will be placed on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, or Blackwell.
Thank you very much. Today I introduce two bills and one non-privilege resolution. Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing Ralston Center to install and maintain bench encroachments on Spring Garden Street, Brown Street, North 37th Street, North 35th Street, and North 34th Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing and directing the changing of the name of Convention Avenue from Health Sciences Drive to South Street to Health Sciences Drive.
Referred to committee.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 51st Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
That will be placed on final passage at our next council session. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I offer two bills, one on your behalf and one on behalf of Council President Clark, and then two resolutions on behalf of Council President Clark.
An ordinance amending Section 191403 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Imposition of Tax by Creating a Philadelphia County Demolition Fund to Increase and Encourage Economic Development by Demolishing Blighted Properties Within the City, imposing a fee when a deed or mortgage is recorded, and related items.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Chapter 9800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant Rent Control by Requiring the Tenants of Rental Units to be Provided with a Written Disclosure of the Landlord's Rental License Information at the Time of and Accompanying Their Lease.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 16th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Resolution will be placed on final passage at our next council session.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 32nd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
The resolution also will be placed at next week's final passage. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. One bill and three privileged resolutions, Mr. Leader.
An ordinance amending Section 9804 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Unfair Rental Practices to Require Good Cause for Certain Residential Evictions and to Provide for a First Option for Existing Tenants to Renew a Lease.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 4th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Will be placed on next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 38th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Resolution will be placed on next week's final calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 52nd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's final calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. Have one privilege and one non-privilege resolution? Thank you, Council.
A privilege resolution recognizing October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia and honoring Susan G. Coman Philadelphia for its charitable work in the field of breast cancer research and education.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution also naming Rittner Street between South 17th Street and South 18th Street Bishop Lewis DeSimone Way.
This resolution will be placed on next week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Majority Leader Heenan. I have one non-privilege resolution cosponsored by Councilmembers Taltenberger, Dom, Blackwell, and Parker. And on behalf of Councilwoman Maria Kiana Sanchez, I have three non-privilege resolutions.
Thank you, Council.
A non-privilege resolution calling upon the Congress of the United States to immediately reauthorize the Children's Health Insurance Program.
Will be placed on final passage next week's council.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 43rd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Resolution will be placed on next week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 18th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Resolution will be placed on final passage of next week's calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 19th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will also be placed on final passage of next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one privilege resolution co-authored by Councilmembers Dom, Heenan, and Green.
Thank you, Council.
A privilege resolution honoring and recognizing Einstein Medical Center Philadelphia, formerly the Jewish Hospital, on receiving a historical marker to commemorate its illustrious history.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taltenberger.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I have no bills or resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. I have one bill, two resolutions, one privilege.
Thank you, Council.
An ordinance authorizing Passyunk Avenue Revitalization Corporation to install, own, and maintain various planter and bike rack encroachments on Passyunk Avenue, South 12th Street, Moore Street, and Watkins Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution designated in the week of Monday, October 2 through Monday, October 9, 2017, as Italian-American Heritage Week in the City of Philadelphia. This is done in celebration of the festivities commemorating Columbus's historic voyage to the New World, and honoring Connie Francis as Grand Marshal of the 2017 Philadelphia Columbus Day Parade.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 39th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Resolution will be placed on next week's final calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of the Department of Public Property to acquire a trussel over Germantown Avenue just below Crescent Valley Drive and to enter into an agreement to license from Pico Energy Company a certain strip of land running parallel to a portion of Crescent Creek.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I offer one privilege resolution, and may I make a request after the title is read?
You may.
Thank you.
A privilege resolution offering the sincere and heartfelt condolences of the people of Philadelphia to the people of Las Vegas, Nevada.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. May I request that we have a standing moment of silence for the tragedy that occurred in Las Vegas?
All stand for a vote and a moment of silence. Clark, are there any bills or resolutions? That's it. We will now move the reports at a committee. The next order of business is reports from the committees. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenley for a report from the committee on rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Rules reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chief Clark, would you please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, which is referred to Bill number one seven zero four zero five, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Memford Street, Oakdale Street, Tulip Street, Oakdale Street, Survivor Street, and Lehigh Avenue. And Bill number one seven zero six eight three, entitled an ordinance continuing the Port Richmond Industrial Development Enterprise Neighborhood Improvement District beyond its termination date in the area bounded generally by the north side of Allegheny Avenue, the west side of Memford Street between Allegheny Avenue and East Westmoreland Street, the south side of East Westmoreland Street, the property line of thirty-three hundred Agate Street, and the back of properties facing west along the east side of Tulip Street between Westmoreland and Ontario Streets, the south side of Ontario Street, the west side of Tulip Street between Ontario and Tioga Streets, the north side of Tioga Street, the back of properties facing west on the east side of Tulip Street between Tioga and Vanango Streets, the back of properties facing along the north side of Vanango Street, including the property located at twenty-three oh one through seven, East Vanango Street, and the back of properties facing east along the west side of Amber Street, as well as the properties located at twenty-sixty-six through twenty-eighty, East Tioga Street, and twenty-eighty-two, East Tioga Street. Continuing the Port Richmond Industrial Development Enterprise, Inc., a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, adds the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a final plan for the district, including a list of proposed improvements and their estimated cost, and providing for assessment fees to be levied on property owners within the district. And Bill number one seven zero seven two one, entitled an ordinance amending Title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising requirements for accessory signs located within the area bounded by Juniper Street, East Passyunk Avenue, and Mifflin Street. Respectfully reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as permit first reading this day of bill numbers one seven zero four zero five, one seven zero six eight three, and one seven zero seven two one.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading of this day, bill numbers one seven zero four zero five, one seven zero six eight three, one seven zero seven two one. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today's session. The chair now recognizes Councilman Squillen for a report for the Committee of Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Streets and Services reports seven bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chief Clark, please read the report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill number one six one one zero five, entitled an ordinance amending chapter ten seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled refuse and littering by expanding the reward program for the provision of information regarding short dumping and revising penalties for refuse and littering violations. And Bill number one seven zero five nine six, entitled an ordinance authorizing Michael and Alexis Bernbaum to install, own, and maintain an exterior metal staircase and planter encroachments at seventeen fourteen through twenty, South Second Street. And Bill number one seven zero seven one five, entitled an ordinance amending chapter ten seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled refuse and littering by further amending section ten seven nineteen entitled penalties to conform with legislation recently enacted by the General Assembly. And Bill number one seven zero seven one eight, entitled an ordinance amending chapter twelve three thousand of the Philadelphia Code entitled use of an automated red light enforcement system to prevent red light violations by authorizing the installation of red light enforcement systems at the intersection of Rising Sun Avenue and Levick Street. And Bill number one seven zero seven two zero, entitled an ordinance authorizing the plotting upon city plan numbers one forty-six and two seventy-one of two rights of way for sewer and drainage purposes and the striking from said city plans, and abandoning of all or portions of four other rights of way for various utility purposes, all lying within the area southeast of Delaware Avenue and northeast of Ellen Street. And Bill number one seven zero seven two two, entitled an ordinance amending section nine two oh four of the Philadelphia Code entitled sidewalk vendors in Center City by eliminating previously designated vendor locations in Center City. And Bill number one seven zero eight zero two, entitled an ordinance authorizing Mark Malini to install, own, and maintain various pedestrian enhancement encroachments at seven oh one through thirty-nine Market Street. Respectfully reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as permit the first reading this day of the seven bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended as permit first reading this day of bill number one six one, one oh five, one seven oh five nine six, one seven oh seven one five, one seven oh seven one eight, one seven oh seven two oh, one seven oh seven two two, and one seven oh eight oh two. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. We will now move to consideration of the calendar. And I note that the bills just reported from committee with a suspension of the rules have been deemed or have had a first reading. These bills will be on our second reading and final passes calendar in our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on his second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Following resolutions, the bills are being called out for second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers one seven zero eight two eight, one seven zero eight two nine, one seven zero eight three four, one seven zero eight three five, one seven zero five one nine dash A. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passes calendar today, if you haven't already done so, you may shine up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers where there's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call a first name on the list.
Harry Barnum. Commenting on one seven zero four zero eight.
Thank you and good morning. Good morning to you, Mr. President. Good morning to all members of the City Council. This is number one seven zero or one four eight, four oh eight. I wanted to read my comments and review them from the past, and I had two comments. I wanted to comment on black children who are disproportionately singled out, and I think everyone of all colors need to be treated equally regardless of their color in the school system. And the reason for my saying that as well, I want to focus on people who are deaf or have disabilities as well as people from different backgrounds. I also want to focus on children who are not deaf who are hearing as well when I look at the school district of Philadelphia and make sure they have access to social workers. I found from my research that they do not have adequate access to those social workers in grades one through five specifically. They do not have access to social workers. That's a critical piece that is not currently present. I don't know if it's in the City of Philadelphia's working budget, but I believe that it is key to be able to make sure that those students are successful, and those parents really need also the opportunity to understand we have a lot of single parents who don't have the education or the background to work with those students. So I think it's important for those teachers to take on the responsibility and to be informed as well as those aides in the school system, principals as well, to understand how to work with those students and not to simply focus on punishing those students. If we don't have a law in place, I think the trouble and the problems will become worse and worse as they interact with the law enforcement. So I believe that a law needs to be passed to not allow those students to be singled out. So I want to caution you and bring that to your attention. Thank you very much. We need social workers in every school.
Thank you.
Commenting on one seven zero six four one.
Morning. This is an official decree of the people of Red Man Damaskoia Warranted and as such requires immediate action remedy. Last week, council addressed the people in Puerto Rico are getting their property stolen by Commonwealth government, by their Commonwealth government. Since council, since council mayor and others have never disputed that my home was taken without payment, without due process, or trial by jury, I feel betrayed and abused by my government. Oathbound officials have clearly violated property rights. Forty-two USC nineteen eighty-two states, all citizens shall have the same right thereof to inherit, purchase, lease, sell, hold, and convey real and personal property. Oathbound officials violated oath and law by refusing to investigate and prosecute all violations, constitutional and otherwise. Council mayor, governor, and others violated constitutional laws by stealing my home without compensation first being made or secured. Oathbound officials took federal taxpayer money but refused to follow constitutional laws and due process. The U.S. Attorney General and the President of the United States clearly are obligated to act and secure probably misused federal taxpayer money. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC nineteen eighty-two, nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-five, nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, eighteen USC two forty-one, two forty-two, twenty-three eighty-one, twenty-three eighty-four, PA Constitution, Article One, Sections one through eleven, twenty-six, PACSA, seven oh three, seven oh five, seven oh eight, seven oh nine, seven twelve, seven thirteen, seven sixteen, and other laws listed in SCOTUS eighty-nine sixty-five, fourteen one three three oh, fourteen four oh five six appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, ten thirty-eight West Wyoming Avenue, the denial of God-given forty-two USC nineteen eighty-two property rights for twenty-three years, is egregious, extraordinary oath violating and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color of law government must have its charter of government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require the constitutional laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monument of corruption.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, can you please read the Title of one seven oh eight twenty-eight?
A resolution urging the President of the United States to affirm the clean water rule.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I should pay attention, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And resolution one seven oh eight two eight is adopted. Mr. Decker, one seven oh eight twenty-nine.
A resolution calling on the United States Congress to fight hunger in Philadelphia by opposing any efforts to block grants, reduce funding, or structurally change the supplemental nutrition assistance program in any way that would negatively impact its recipients and oppose efforts to cut other federally funded nutrition programs.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And resolution one seven oh eight twenty-nine is adopted. Mr. Decker, one seven oh eight thirty-four.
A resolution approving the action of the boards of the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development to sell a property in the vicinity of Seventy-Sixth Street and Holstein Avenue in the Eastwick Urban Renewal Area Stage A industrial containing approximately two acres to P.O. Construction and Roma Concrete where it's a signee or nominee.
And the chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And resolution one seven oh eight thirty-four is adopted. Mr. Decker, one seven oh eight thirty-five.
A resolution also naming Chelwind Avenue between Bailey Street and South Seventy-Fourth Street Akira Murray Way to honor and celebrate Akira's life, which was tragically cut short in the shooting at Pulse nightclub in Orlando, Florida.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. One seven oh eight thirty-five is adopted. Mr. Decker, one seven oh five one nine A.
An ordinance amending chapter nineteen thirteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled real estate taxes by creating a tax foreclosure diversion program that requires housing counseling assistance, updating tax installment payment agreements to help taxpayers with financial hardships and other related items.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenley.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squillen.
Aye.
Councilman Tottenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are fifteen and the nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing October two thousand seventeen as Energy Action Month in the City of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating Young Involved Philadelphia and its Eighth Annual State of Young Philly Week in the City of Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing October two thousand seventeen as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia and honoring Susan G. Coman Philadelphia for its charitable work in the field of breast cancer and research, breast cancer research and education introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I want to move the adoption of the resolution and also say a few remarks, please.
Absolutely. Councilman, chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. While introducing this resolution, I just want to encourage and continue to support all those who are survivors of breast cancer, all those who have lost loved ones to breast cancer, and also continue to advocate for support for Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the Susan G. Coman Foundation, and also say publicly, F U cancer. I like to move for the adoption of the resolution.
Aye.
Councilman has a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Einstein Medical Center Philadelphia, formerly the Jewish Hospital, on receiving a historical marker to commemorate its illustrious history introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution designated in the week of Monday, October two through Monday, October nine, two thousand seventeen, as Italian-
9, 2017, is Italian-American Heritage Week in the City of Philadelphia. This is done in celebration of the festivities commemorating Columbus' historic voyage to the New World and honoring Connie Francis as Grand Marshal of the 2017 Philadelphia Columbus Day Parade introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution offering the sincere and heartfelt condolences of the people of Philadelphia to the people of Las Vegas, Nevada introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. Did you want a standing vote?
We did do a standing moment of silence, Council President.
All right. That's, we're going to do a standing moment of silence.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to inform our colleagues as well as the public that tonight there will be a mixer for PHL Live Center Stage and the Philadelphia Music Industry Task Force that this body created to deal with the music economy. That will be tonight at 6:30, and it goes till 8:30 at Williams Street Common, 3900 Chestnut Street. That is cosponsored by the Office of Arts Culture, the Creative Economy. So everybody is welcome. And then finally, I've been talking about this for a little bit, and I will stop talking about it because tomorrow is the Green Beret Foundation fundraiser at Saigon Maxim, 612 Washington Avenue. And so we will have the, our former governor, Ed Rendell, former mayor, the Pennsylvania Speaker of the House, Michael Turzai, and the former undersecretary of the Army, Pat Murphy, along with celebrities like WBC, WBA World Boxing Champion Danny Swift Garcia, international DJ Casper. It's a good time for a good cause, so I hope everyone can come out 6 o'clock to 9 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ten years ago, in the midst of a deep financial housing crisis, homeowners in the City of Philadelphia were being evicted left and right. My former colleague, Councilwoman Marion Tascow, introduced a resolution to put a moratorium on sheriff sales. That was step one. Step two, we were able to convince former Judge Annette Rizzo to institute the mortgage diversion program. That program prevented thousands of residents in the City of Philadelphia from losing their homes and getting a second chance at the mortgage process. We invited bankers. We invited advocates. We invited institutions to be a part of that program. It became a national model, and it started in part right here in these chambers. Because of the program, we were able to save since then approximately 11,000 families from losing their homes out of the 16,000 homeowners that participated in the program between 2008 and 2011. That's 85% of the homeowners who participated were able to remain in their homes. Fast forward to 2017, Philadelphia is the fifth largest nation in the city, I mean, in the country, population of a little better than 1.5 million residents here now. The mayor's executive order highlighting the city's housing crisis, which also was highlighted here in these chambers some time ago when the mayor was a council person, talks about the affordable housing shortage. It also talks about increased pressures to evict low and moderate income people out of their homes. Therefore, I've introduced a piece of legislation for our consideration which is called Just Cause. Not just because I realize the property values have gone up, not just because I can, but just cause for good tenants who have been in their houses and apartments sometimes for decades from being kicked out of their homes. We are introducing it. We are going to engage in dialogue, first with my colleagues. I'm going to talk to members of City Council's Housing Committee chaired by Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, who's been a longtime advocate on these issues. But I'm also going to talk to the Apartment Association. I want to talk to the tenants union. We, what this will not be is rent control. I do not want to be New York, but I don't want to be cities like Seattle, cities like Oakland that have so far gone on gentrification tirades that people, working people, can no longer afford to live within the city limits. So we hope to begin the dialogue with this legislation and come up with something that, just like the mortgage foreclosure program, can be a national model. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the desk of my colleagues is a sticker hashtag Ready For 100 Campaign, an initiative started by our friends at the Sierra Club. You should know that they are just one of many advocates pressing for a more sustainable city government and encouraging us to lower our carbon footprint. Therefore, I'm inviting members of the Environment and Sustainability Committee and/or all staff to join us immediately following council for briefing on our city's municipal energy master plan. This plan sets out a vision for energy use across our city's infrastructure as government needs to lead by example, and it's a critical step forward for our city in reducing our carbon footprint. In all ways where two are gathered, there should be food, and there should be music, but in this case, there will only be food. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think given the two, having food would probably be more productive. That concludes our speeches on behalf of the majority and the minority, and with that, I call on Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, October 12, 2017, at 10 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the council stand adjourn until Thursday, October 12, 2017, 10 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.